It is 7:03, October 8th, 2020. This is the Arundel Planning Board meeting via Zoom on our regular meeting. I will start with a roll call. Let's see. Susan's here, Jens is here, Tom is here, Roger is here, Marty is here. I'm Rich Canong, the chairman, and I'm obviously here. So on, again, on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from September 24th. We have public comments, and then we are going to work on land use revision ordinances. We have six different items. We have seven items to look at. We have item one is a discussion of the land use ordinance sections 8615 and 8635, special exception criteria for the resource protection and the stream protection districts. Item number two is accessory sheds, sheds with a reduced setback in residential zones. Item three is the addition of land use ordinance 933 age restricted housing. Item four is a discussion with action on an amendment to land use ordinance 9331 Cluster Housing PUD. Item number five is a discussion with removal land use ordinance section 93141 and contract the yard to registration due to the expiration of the contract of the registration process. Item number six is to establish public hearing schedules for the land use ordinance amendments. And item seven is a scheduled sidewalk for Bentley's campground, and then we will have other business as it is brought up.
I'd like to make a motion. We moved a scheduled sidewalk for Bentley's to number one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Motion's been made by Roger and seconded by Jens to move this, the discussion for the scheduling of the sidewalk for Bentley's up to item number one, which is a great idea. This way it'll get poor Rick Light out of here, and he won't have to sit through all of our stuff.
Yay.
Thank you.
A motion has been made to amend the agenda. Any, any discussion?
I think second.
That was Jens.
That was Jens.
Jens?
Yep.
Any, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, and we're voting just on the amendment to move the item up. Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Now we need to, a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Jens. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, do we want to set a date for the sidewalk? Well, no, we have to get through the rest of the, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for September 24th.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor? Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty?
Yeah.
It is unanimous.
Billy says aye.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Anyone in the public that would like to say something that is not on the agenda? Susan, if you're trying to say something, you're muted. Susan, say it.
I'm not.
Okay. I did not know. Okay, then we will close the public comment section of the meeting and move right to item number one, which is to schedule a sidewalk for Bentley's campground. Again, this is probably, this'll probably take a little bit of time, don't you think, Ted?
Um, well, yeah, it could.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about doing it at like 6 o'clock in the evening. Because it'll be dark way too soon thereafter. So we're probably gonna have to look at doing a Saturday morning at some point.
So we do a five like we did with Oak Ridge.
We could try 5 o'clock.
I'm not adverse to that, but.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd support that.
Okay.
And I do too.
Then let's pick a date.
How far out do we need to be, Ted?
About three days.
How about next Thursday?
Next Thursday, the 22nd?
I'm good with that.
The 15th, I'm sorry.
The 15th?
The 15th.
Yeah, I think I'm fine with that.
Okay, that's good. At 5 o'clock.
Mm-hmm. Where do we meet, Rich?
We will meet at Bentley's.
At the bar.
At the bar. Okay.
Oh, that's afterwards.
And is Rick buying?
Well, I don't know. He should, he should because if we moved him up and made.
Are you buying?
Wow. He's muted. Got to turn him back on.
Yeah, but he can hear.
He's not, he turned himself off.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Through the chair, if we could, I know that the campground Bentley is unable to be here tonight, but it closes on the 18th, 19th. So in order to not intrude on the residents who are still the campers there, can we do it after the week of the 19th or the week of the 26th? So Bentley will be around. Is that too late?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yes, the week of the, week of the 26th will be fine, any night or that weekend.
Yeah.
Week of the 26th.
Preferably not a weekend if we can do it at 5.
You, you name the day, that's fine. 5 o'clock's fine with us.
We have a planning board meeting on the 22nd. Should we do it before that?
Sure.
Yeah, we, we can do it at 5 o'clock that day.
Yeah, 22nd, 5 o'clock.
Yeah, and then we go home for, for chow, and then we come back to the, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Shouldn't take too long. So 5 o'clock at the campground on October 22nd, Thursday.
Okay.
Where we meet?
Where do we meet, Rick?
Probably go in, if you go into the campground area, just meet it. If you take a right into Phase 1A and called the Andy Caskey Way, go into the area 2A. So it's hard to describe, but go into the campground, take a right. You know where it is, Ted, right?
Yeah, I do. I'm trying to direct them.
Set on Old Post Road?
No, no, you go in off.
No, 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 it's off of Route 1.
Okay.
Just pass along the floor.
Yeah, no, I know where it is. I just, the entrance to the campground is on Post Road, right?
No, it's, it's Route 1. He's not allowed, he's not allowed to use the old post road to go in.
Oh, got it. Okay.
It's, if you look at the, if you're driving north on Route 1 from Limerick, it's, it's, you come, go back to the Ford place, it's, there's a sign with a Bentley's, old Bentley's jalopy there.
Yeah, yeah, I know where it is. I thought we could also go in the other way.
No, that's just a private drive. Yeah.
Got it.
So October 20th, 5:00 PM at the campsite.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'll make a formal motion for that time, 22nd at 5 o'clock.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to hang on just for a second. Jens had a question.
Well, yeah, my question was, and this may be for Sue too, is why, why is this coming forward like five years later?
It was supposed to have come back, back at the beginning of the summer. Bentley's, according to the original permit that was issued, Bentley's is supposed to come back either every three years or at the completion of, of the, the next phase that he's working through. It's been three years since he was in front of us, so we need to go out and take a look at it.
And, and to be clear through the chair, if I could, the, yeah, what we did is we made a submission to the town planner, to Ted, on June 30th to do the three-year submission and requesting that the traffic portion of that, there are three conditions, looking at the, just looking at what's happened, reviewing the ASBILs, which we've submitted, and reviewing traffic, and we suggested that traffic study wouldn't be warranted this time because of COVID. It doesn't make any sense. So they put it off till next year, but we made a submission, then we tabled it, withdrew it because Bentley was out of town for quite a bit of the summer and into the fall, and we'd like to get that, we'd like to get that back on the table as we are doing now. My question is, Ted, should we form, or formally resubmit it to you with a new date? Do you need hard copies or just PDFs?
Uh, if you can get me hard copies, that'd be great, because I'll give it to the planning board. They should have it when they go out.
So 10 hard copies, I'll, I'll, I'll take the submission we gave to you, and we'll update the date, nothing else changed.
Right.
And I'll get you 10 hard copies and a PDF.
Right.
Correct?
Right, that'll do it.
Okay, we'll have this, yeah, have those for the first of the week, 10 hard copy and PDF, and then we'll be.
We will not, we will not be there. We're closed next week.
Oh, you are, because of the move?
Yeah, we're moving.
If I mail them, can they, they'll just sit in the mailbox somewhere?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay.
Get to my address, hopefully, if the, if the.
If not, I'll handle them the following week.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I can't wait to see the, can't wait to see the new digs. I want a tour.
Yeah, so do I. I still hope we're gonna put all the, all the files. We, we, we still argue about where those are gonna go.
Tom, you want to resubmit your motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we scheduled a sidewalk at 5 o'clock, Thursday, the 22nd.
Good.
Second.
Okay. Tom made a motion, Susan seconded for a sidewalk at 5:00 PM on October 22nd. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none. Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
Marty?
I'll say aye, but I don't know if I'm gonna be able to.
That's okay. Tom?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much, Rick. Have a good.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Next item on the, the agenda, discussion with action, the addition of land use ordinance section 8615 and 8635, special exception criteria for the resource protection and stream district, uh, stream protection districts. And you should, you should see most of those in, in the documentation that Ted sent out to us.
So Ted, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so there would seem to be multiple versions. I, either it was too late in the afternoon, but I couldn't discern differences between the different PDFs and Word docs. Were they just refinements, one on the other?
Well, you should have, for, for the Stream Protection District, we had, we had one that was in, dated September 17th, it was revised October 5th at the meeting. And it dealt with things like, uh, let's see, it dealt essentially with a question that was asked about special exemptions not being granted as a remedy for violation of shoreline zoning setbacks. That was the first item. We changed, put that up at the beginning. The second thing that we had discussed was the issue of Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook, which are impaired watersheds and actually have 100-foot setbacks instead of 75. Those are impaired watersheds in which we agreed with, uh, with the Thatcher Brook and Upper Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook watershed plan to maintain setbacks that were more rigid because of the damage that's been done to those two watersheds. Those are, will be EPA federally impaired watersheds, by the way. In case you forgot, Richardson Brook is that Brook when we did, when we did a shoreline zoning three years ago. Richardson Brook was the one that goes through Proctor Road area, uh, and Upper Thatcher Brook is the one that goes along Old Alfred Road. Those were two identified as seriously impaired streams, and they would not, they would be, they would not be eligible for a reduction, because that was the agreement we made with the feds. And then the other thing was, we had talked about setbacks no less than, and we talked about setbacks no less than 25 feet. Here's the only problem that I have. If we have an actual water course, a DEP water course, DEP requires you to be 50 feet back, if you recall. And so if, even if it's a water course that's not a shoreline zone, so I think we'd be running into the, maybe the same problem. If we have a stream that we would grant a, a setback variance for a stream that was less than 50 feet, it's still a DEP 50-foot watershed setback, which I guess you can get a, a, a variance from DEP on, because Nick did. If you recall, he was, he was less than 50 feet away from the stream, and he got a permit. So I'm not quite sure what to do about that, but elsewhere in our ordinances, it requires in all districts that you be at least 50 feet away from a DEP stream.
Question.
Yeah.
Yes, is there written, thanks, is there any reason with, that we shouldn't have a situation where, well, maybe we'll, we will grant it, but you gotta go talk to the feds first, and whether we'll consider it depends on whether you get it from them.
Well, that's what happened this time with, with Black Dog.
So is, you think that's a good, is that a good vehicle? I mean, he's gonna be more plugged into the sensitivities involved, other than the applicant's own situation.
Well, I mean, the, the, the other thing to do is I'll float this up to Jeff at, at DEP and find out what he thinks about it, because he's got to approve it in the end anyways.
What I'm trying to, what I'm thinking about is, you know, why should we be considering this stuff if there's maybe yet another hurdle that the, the applicant has to go through? Why don't have him do that so that we're not taking up our time? Because that's, are we six or seven members of the board plus Ted? Plus the applicant, as opposed to just the, you know, getting the blessing of the, of the federal agency, and then assuming they get that, then they bring it before us. Seems to me that there would be some conservation of resources there.
Yeah, question for you. Are you saying fed or state?
I meant, I mean, I meant state. I mean, you know, the, the state body. Thank you, Marty.
But the feds are no longer involved in, in, in un-navigable water courses.
Yeah, I misspoke, and that's why I had puzzled looks on all of your faces, except Marty, since I can't see, but he's the one that spoke up, so.
So I, I have a question as far as all that goes. I thought it was whatever's most restrictive. Just because we would allow 35 feet, that doesn't mean the state would allow it. So what I say, we, I, I like what you're saying, Jens, just go with, with what is standard from state. And that way, if that, the applicant isn't, isn't fighting between two jurisdictions, and I think it makes it simpler.
Yeah.
Then you're suggesting we go with 50 then? Yeah, yeah.
I like that.
Question, I have a question.
Okay, Marty.
What about an existing property that may need to be reconstructed? How does that work? Because it is already an existing lot, or anything else has been there before, and it is located along a stream, which I'm speaking of is like on Campground Road.
Wouldn't DEP, Marty, wouldn't we defer to DEP on what?
No.
So we would do that at, at the town level?
Shoreland zoning is ours. It's not DEP's. It's mandated by, but we have to do the administration of shoreline zoning. That's the state mandate. They, they, they back away when they find out it's a shoreline zoning, as, as we saw the last with, with, with Black Dog. What Marty's talking about is situations where we have existing uses, and that's well covered in non-conforming uses in the non-conforming section of, of Section 8. I mean, it's not, this is not providing for, it's situations where you have an existing problem, or you have an existing condition, like the one Marty's talking about on Campground Road. That's an existing condition, and that has state mandated restrictions on how much, how mu, how long you have to rebuild in order to maintain your non-conforming status, your, your grandfather's status, if you will, and how much you can expand in order to continue to use the property and make expansions of a non-conforming use so that it conforms to the state limitations on non-conforming uses in a shoreline zone. That stuff's already covered.
Question, one with that, Ted.
Yeah.
What about if ownership is transferred?
Well, this goes back to what Susan was talking about before, and say the main, ownership usually isn't the issue, it's the use. So the, the non-conformity goes with the property and not with the owner.
Okay, that's why I was just thinking of a situation where it might come up with an existing stream.
Point, Marty, and, and that is exactly one in which the code enforcement officer has informed that party that you have two years to, to rebuild that building or to repair it. There's a building that's in fire, it's not habitable, and you have.
How about replacement?
Uh, what I would say, Marty, is, is look at non-conformity in, in, in our ordinance, because it's, it's very clearly in, let me get it, let me get the citation for you.
Well, we're really, basically what we're discussing here are, is not that issue.
No.
We should try to stay in the, in the moment of the thing that we're trying to discuss. Uh, Marty, and I think you, obviously you always have valid points, but we, let's not get a feel to what we're trying to pass here. Um, and that is, uh, you know, what is the definition of special exception? That's not, that is virgin territory, so to speak, and doesn't involve some of the complications that Marty is raising at this point. Is that correct?
Susan, Susan, the only reason I'm mentioning that is so that we don't have a new landmine while if we're doing any of this, that's the only reason. So we don't have to come back and change something else again.
Right, and I think it's a valid, I think it's valid, but it was, it's asked and answered, so to speak, and, you know.
I think the, I think the answer is in the language itself. If you look at the language in the Resource Protection District, it says if a single-family dwelling is proposed, that implies that there's nothing there to start with. It's the same situation in the Stream Protection District. Well, the one exception on the Stream Protection District is if there's no other place you can put it. Then, then you could get a conditional use or, or a special exception to put your house in there. But that's assuming that there is no other place on that property that you could put it. And, and that was a situation we ran into in Black Dog. He put it in the only place that it could be put in, and then somebody put the house in the wrong spot. And, and what, what we're, we're now saying is that if it is caused by something that you, the homeowner, do, you don't qualify for a special exception. If, if this had been in place, we would have had to have told Nick, move the house, put it where it's supposed to be. Which I don't have a problem with, by the way.
Yeah, we remember that.
Well, it wouldn't, and Nick would.
Lucky for him, the rest of us did.
Nick would not have been able to do it anyways, because it was a new lot. It was not a lot that existed prior to June 14, 2017, which was the date in which shorelands, our shoreline zoning was passed, our revised shoreline zoning was passed. So it only applies to lots that existed prior to the expanded shoreline zoning. And that means new lots, new lots since 1917. So Nick would have been automatically disqualified.
You mean 2017?
Yes.
Okay, so quick question for you.
17.
He did say 1917.
1917. So the Russian Revolution, which we might have anytime soon, we're gonna overthrow the czar, which may be you, Ted. So in any event, which last refinement of all of these different versions, is there one version that sort of takes the best of all of the refinements that you presented to us, or does that have to be crafted still? To include like what Jens just brought up, to maintain the 50-foot setback and let the person, the individual seeking the special exception go to DEP first, before they come to the planning board, so we.
That's, that's their prerogative. I'm, we're not gonna, we're not gonna tell them when they have to get a DEP permit.
Right, right. I'm just saying, so which of the definitions of the special exception, is there more to the three documents that you sent us? Do you want to, would you collate what's in there and take the best of the best?
Well, it's for three different districts.
Okay, so we don't have one for if all districts?
No, one for the three districts, one's for stream protection, one's for resource protection, one's for shoreline overlay.
Okay.
Because they're all different, they, they're, they're all different. Stream protection is, as we pretty much have agreed, as, as we've been educated in the last year by the Kennebuck River water testing, we have a problem with our streams in the town of Arundel, and so that's probably the one we're gonna be most sensitive to in the near future. I think we're gonna find, we're gonna, we may even find ourselves being more aggressive than what's in here. More aggressive than a 75-foot setback, because if these, if the Kennebunk River gets listed as an impaired watershed, then that means it's gonna be pressure for us to extend restrictions up into its tributaries, which include Duck Brook and Goff Mill Brook.
So, hang on, hang on for a minute. Susan had had a question.
No, I didn't. I was saying congratulations on knowing the difference between 1917 and 2017, but I was saying funny.
I saw you.
I was clapping. I was like, good job on that one. It's like, wow, that's a really old ordinance. Congrats, that's awesome.
That's true. We didn't even have, we didn't even. At that point.
I was like, the teacher in me was going, I don't think that's right, but that's okay. I apologize. Continue.
I was channeling the battle of the song.
I was like, that's a pandemic again. That's a different story.
There are three separate adjustments to the ordinance that we're looking at, because they're three separate districts, and there's, there's an adjustment to one of them.
Yeah, the latest one for the special exceptions for the Stream Protection District, that's 8635. The, the one that's for, uh, the Resource Protection is 863.
15.
5, and then for the, we have to have, I also have slipped in one on you for 8625 for the shoreline overlay district. Again, something that we had passed in June or July, but not realizing what the findings of the Kennebuck River Study were gonna be. And that, sure, we have Goff Mill Brook and Brimstone Brook. Well, Goff's Mill Brook is in fact in, in the, has 100, has a 250 foot. It's got 100-foot setback and a 250-foot district around it, and so we have something with, with that. Because it's not in the Stream Protection District, and it needs to have some stronger language, I would, I would guess, given what we know is coming down the pike from, uh, from the Kennebuck River Study. But that was gonna be a proposal, I was gonna make kind of adjunct, it's not really an agenda item, because it wasn't on the agenda. But I thought I'd throw it in just to discuss it with you folks, but.
So what would you like us to consider on all these three?
Well, let's take, I think we should take them apart and take a look at, at each one of them. Because we have the, well, the one I'm just, that we've just been talking about is 8635, which is the Stream Protection, because we've been dealing with that for quite, quite some time. And I, I'd like you to go through those and see if you agree. And I, I'd like you to go through those and see if you agree with, with that.
So I read this earlier and. So what for the setbacks, Tad? Are they, are the three different zones pretty much the same? In terms of the language that, um. The language of the ordinance, are they the same except but for the setbacks?
No, no, remember that there, there are three different, we have only three districts and they're.
Right, right.
And the districts are different in, in terms of the resource that's being protected. You know, um, the most restrictive is the Resource Protection District. Um. So, which of course is the one.
Looking at right now.
Yeah.
Like, that's a 250 foot setback and we can, we can grant an exception to that, given certain criteria.
Yeah. I'm just looking to see what happened to my copies of that. Oh, there they are, oh, thank goodness.
I needed a calculator for this thing so I could look at them all together.
Yeah, okay, well, you know, the special exceptions, I'm not really happy about the Resource Protection District's special exceptions. But that's eight, six, one, five, and what we're saying in here is that again, uh, special exceptions, not a remedy for a violation. If a single family dwelling is proposed, the effective parcel must be a lot of record prior to June 14 and meet the standards of section. Eight, seven, four, right now in the shoreline zone, in the shoreline zone. We have an exemption that if you have a lot, a pre-existing lot. That, uh, does not have a single family home on it. In other words, you haven't gotten a reasonable return from it, you're allowed to put that, a single family house on that. On that, uh, in that district in a place where it's, uh, it's most viable. Where you can actually do it without impacting the resource. Now, if you got a 250 foot up, upland, um, setback. They, you, you have to put it in the upland setback. They want you to put it in the upland, because frankly speaking, you're not gonna pass, you have a real hard time passing plumbing code, putting a septic system. In, um, within the resource, because you can have water, yeah, you're gonna have the water table within 12 inches.
Right, right, right.
Just excuse me.
So, yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I have a couple of questions. What, uh, is there a definition somewhere of what interpretive means as applied in this? Uh, proposed?
No, no.
Okay, number two, uh, I think D has the reference to bona fide, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so it's, so that means actual, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll want to re spell that, I think.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. B O N A, it's probably, when you dictate it, that's how it comes out.
Yeah.
Uh, cause it doesn't know Latin.
No, it doesn't.
B O N A, new word, F I D E.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking about the word interpretive and whether, since it's not defined anywhere else, whether we should, uh. Talk about that, what does that mean?
Well.
What are we intended to mean?
I think at the last meeting we had talked, I talked to you about Corkscrew Swamp in Florida, which is an interpretive trail. And, and we can take the interpretive out, uh, if we, if that causes a problem. It means a nature trail, which there are usually signs along the way that, that point out important elements of that ecosystem. It's really a nature trail in which it teaches you, it's didactic, it teaches you about various elements. Of that ecosystem as you walk.
Um, I think it would be a good idea to, would it be a lot of effort to add that word? Or that phrase to the definitions under the ordinance, so we, we don't invite somebody come in and. Uh, say, well, how about using ATVs on this interpretive trail or something like that? Just take, to take advantage of what is intended to be a protective measure by the town.
All right, we could do that.
If, if we're going to do that, I think we need to, to define interpretive nature trail instead of interpretive. Because you're going to find different definitions for interpretive.
Right.
And in this case, since we're talking about the nature trail, make it specific to the, to the trail.
I agree.
But also bona fide is.
Consistently throughout the, throughout that section of the ordinance. So you're not leaving words out.
Yep.
Even bona fide could get you into.
Yes, it can.
So, you know, bona fide basically means, well.
Good faith.
In good faith, but it gives you the impression that in some way it's been officially blessed. Or has some kind of official, you know, designation or whatever. If it's a bona fide, it means real genuine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jens, in addition to good faith, that, so. Bonafide, interpretive, interpretative, interpretive. Um, that's a loaded phrase.
Justin just strike out the word bona fide, which I.
I just did.
Yeah.
I did, just did, I think, um, one of the reasons I bring this up, and I know I'm launching on this stuff on you guys last minute, but I mean, I think we. It, it's something that's, uh, always, um. The Resource Protection District allows only certain things in it. And it talks about, you know, campsites and fire prevention activities, forest management, whatever that means. Private campsites can occur within the district. Motorized and non-motorized vehicle travel on, traffic on existing roads, trails and rails. Non-intensive recreational uses not requiring structures such as hunting, fishing and hiking. So the water conservation practices and temporary pier stocks, wars, bridges, blah, 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 wildlife management activities. You know, non-intensive recreational uses, not requiring structures. Um, such as hunting, fishing and hiking, well, I don't, anybody's ever hiked the AT. Uh, or taken any kind of, of bridge over a water course or a marsh knows that. There's a structure involved because you can't walk through some of these things. You're not gonna be able to walk through a bog, uh, without doing some improvements. You're not gonna be able to walk across a stream, forward a stream without putting some sort of rude bridge over it. And we know in the AT, if you ever walk that, that's usually a split log. It's laid on the ground, usually has to get lifted out at various times, because it gets thrown out by, by floods or, or, uh, freeze thaw. But the objective is to provide some structure and this just kind of basically says. You can't have any structure within that Resource Protection District. And if we look, I, maybe, maybe I'm being too focused, but if we want to have people go into some of these resources. To learn something about the resource. Um, as I, as our friends at ACT are going to want to do with their, uh, their properties. And I say properties, because they're not gonna be limited to just one, now they have two, they'll have more in the future. We want to get people into some of these resources where they're not gonna have an impact on wildlife populations. And sometimes, or, or a plant community, sometimes putting in structure actually preserves those communities. It keeps you people on the trail and keeps them, uh, um, from impacting, let's say, causing, uh. A little bit too much impact upon soils or vegetation within that trail system. Actually, they can be beneficial to have structure in that kind of situation, but it should be very. Uh, it should be something that's governed or basically regulated by the planning board. To make sure not everybody in the world starts throwing in tires and using those as bridges to go through their, their wetlands.
So we needed, do we need language that, uh, contemplates structures, but they've got to be approved structures?
Right, that's what I was just thinking.
Or natural structures?
Uh, that's, that's where this board has to give some thought to, to what kind of structures do you want? And do you want to limit them? And obviously, if you have to get a special exception to put a structure, then you're gonna have to have some, so, do some thinking on this. Um, where I, obviously ACT is gonna come before us and, and they have a Resource Protection District, they're gonna have to, they want to go through it. And right now, the ordinance doesn't really, it allows hiking trails, but it. Doesn't let structures in those trails, which means if they've got some bridges, they're gonna want to put in for their bike trail.
But what yet, what Jens just said, as approved. So you have to come to get your structure approved.
That's right.
As opposed to being, defining it, I, I think we're, we get into. You know, quicksand, trying to define it, because we can't think of everything, but if it's, if somebody brings us an idea and we approve it. Then the structure goes forward and if we don't. Uh, I mean, do we have to have a formal criteria in order, in the ordinance?
No.
To say as approved?
I think that if we, I think that if we, if our, uh. If our objective of maintaining the, you know, nature interpretive. Uh. Is clear as our, as our guide, as our objective to the applicant and to. Ourselves as the board and, and our successor members, then that would be fine. I, I do think there'd be, there needs to be something that, uh, that guides it, but I think that could be it.
I, I like that idea, I have to tell you, looking at what we have for the ordinance right now, section E troubles me. Access, accessory structures may be located within the 250 foot setback of an RP zone consisting of forested wetlands.
Yep. That bothers you?
Yeah, the whole concept of putting an accessory structure back there bothers me. Because we, it's defined differently in other places throughout the ordinance. An accessory structure could be a deck, could be a garage.
Yep.
Would be any number of items, I don't want any of those things back there.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to put up like a little, I can't think of what you call it, one of those, the, the, those little.
Sign, those sign kiosks.
Right, thank you, a sign kiosk that, that has information about what you're looking at, I think that would be fine, but do you really want to be putting up? A hundred square foot shed back there?
No.
Yeah, I, I see, that's why I have.
Split logs, split log, uh, pedestrian walkways, uh. Handrails perhaps in certain places where it might be safer for the disabled, that kind of thing.
Well, one thing I'll let me, you know, if any of you have your ordinances, one of the reasons I put that in there was because. Uh, right now, under conditional uses in the, uh, if you look at eight, six, one, one, or actually eight, six, one, two. In your ordinances, the first item on, under conditional uses that are permitted in the Resource Protection District are accessory structures.
Yeah, that's true.
That's always kind of bothered me a little bit.
So maybe do we go back then to Todd, to Ted, to, uh, look at adding something to the definition section of the ordinance? That is kind of a, um, you know, a JV version of accessory structures that are intended for. Uh, wha- what we're doing here in environmentally sensitive areas, just. Almost like a subset of accessory structures.
Yeah, we could do that, I mean, that's, that's a good, that's the question to ask, I mean. If I look, if we look at our definition, I'm turning to right now, accessory structure is a user structure which is customarily incidental. And subordinate to the primary use or structure. Accessory uses or structures when aggregated shall not subordinate the principal use or, of use or structure. A deck or similar extension of the principal structure or a garage attached to the principal structure by a roof or common wall. Is considered part of the principal structure. Um, so what that's basically saying is that, uh, an accessory use. Cannot be larger than the principal structure.
That's technically pretty large.
Yeah, uh, well, uh, that, that could be, well, it means in other words, if you have a house with a barn. And the barn's in the resource, you want to put it in the setback for the Resource Protection District, that barn cannot be, cannot be bigger than the house. So if there's a house there in the first place. Accessory structure means that it's something that's accessory to a principal use, which means. Basically, there's, there's gotta be a principal use in that district. In the, in the Resource Protection District, you see the problem, I'm grappling with here with Jens, because.
But every nature.
That would be, that would be something, that would mean that you've got to have something that's in. That you've got a principal use that's on the lot, that's not in the Resource Protection District. Or it's in the Resource Protection District and he, a guy wants to put up a garage, he can do that.
So I think maybe what we think about doing is creating a wholly new, but very narrow, uh, definition. Um. For this purpose. Um, something like.
Excuse me, how about using something with safety?
Well, um, the, the kiosks wouldn't be safety, uh, but. Certainly the log path is, uh, the, the log, uh, you know, support for a path. Um, I think it probably shouldn't be just limited to safety. It should be limited to the, to the maximizing the, uh, utility of the interpretive trail. And some of those things are safety, some of those things are informational. Uh, so something like, um. May, maybe something like interpretive, uh, element or something like that. And we can, we can kick around terms that we might want to use that would capture both the, the, the safety element that Marty's talking about. And, uh, and, uh, the informational aspect of a kiosk. And there probably, there are probably other, uh, objectives that we want to achieve too.
I think in a way, we have to sit down and think about what those things are that we're really trying to permit in that district. Boardwalks, we're saying, uh, signage.
Boardwalks, signage.
How about, you know, I mean, you know, what if they, what if they want, I mean, I'm just thinking of this bike trail that might be going through. Let's say they want to have a small, little, like, guard shed for putting in tools. Or something like that.
Benches or.
Uh, benches, yeah, good point, so. Hand bench, benches, maybe a handrail.
Even a covered bench, someplace to get out of the elements.
Now you're talking about, now we're talking about. Yeah.
Maybe restrictive devices to keep the, to encourage the public not to go off, you know, off the, off the trail. Like, uh, a rope, you know, vanilla rope path or something, rope, uh, uh, constraint.
Okay, Susan, something to say.
I have a quick question, isn't there, isn't there anything that you have for the Eastern Trail to be made that way? Eastern Trail has paths, it has, uh, has bridges, it has benches, it has. Kiosks, it has, and it goes over water and it goes over, what, wasn't there something done for that? Can't you just piggyback and just make sure, I mean, you've already done that?
Well, we, we didn't, uh, the Eastern Trail actually did that. But it raises the interesting point, that's something we can see.
I'm like, it's exactly what you're talking about, the entire Eastern Trail was done to make, so people wouldn't go off into the thing, they could explore it, they could see the. Fauna, they could go over the water, they could have a railing, they could have a thing, they stopped, they, they put the, um, the. Metal posts that you can't go in ATV into it, I mean, the whole thing was exactly what you're talking about.
Yep. And it was done without shoreline zoning permits.
Of course it was.
We should look at that language.
If there's, if there's some language in the Eastern Trail documents that we could use. Then we, instead of recreating the wheel, let's just grab them and bring them over.
Smarter, not harder, I'm just asking, because everything you're talking about is exactly what the.
I hadn't thought about the Eastern Trail until you mentioned it.
Hey, I, I just want to know why you didn't speak up earlier, Sue.
I tried to, I waved. Next time I'll say to the chair, no, I'm just kidding, okay, guys.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Yeah, you should.
But I think that.
I'm not part of the planning board, I'm just asking a question, because everything you're discussing is the Eastern Trail and what they did to prevent everything you're talking about, so I was just curious.
Well, the only reason the Eastern Truck could do that is because that had, we had very, very strict rule. We had very, very strict rules, uh, that we had to follow that were basically DOT rules. Uh, and, um, also the, the. We only have an easement through there and there's a gas line there and.
Right.
Those guys tough. They were very tough. Uh, they're, the requirements for, uh, you saw rocks at various. Uh, crossings where there were established ATV trails and so forth. That was something that the, uh, in the bollards that you were talking about, the collapsible bollards or the rigid bollards at the bridge over the Kennebunk River. Those were mandated actually less by, by the town. Actually, the town knew nothing about that stuff. That was.
Maybe there is language for us to co-op there.
Well, I can co-op some of that language. I'll go in and look at some of the language that Terry used in his, in his original, Terry Gowan did in his original. Um, uh, preparation is original grant material to this, to the feds. Um, but a lot of that stuff was actually dictated, uh, by the utility, Unitile.
They're saying if it's already there and it's already quite clear, why would you re? Why won't you just pick it up and utilize? Cuz what, everything you're saying is what's.
Yeah.
In it and then couple it to what your town ordinance is. Instead of reworking the wheel, it's already created.
To the chair, can I make a suggestion? Since we have this, uh, good suggestion. From Susan and, and willingness from, uh, from Ted to, uh, look at that and. Bring that forward to us and we have a lot of other items on the agenda to talk about. Maybe we move on to the next item.
Well, that, I think that's a wonderful idea. I was, I was about to ask if there was anything else in the resource protection. That, that people thought we needed to look at.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Making sure that the town does not have to maintain, like it says on the eastern trail. Where we have to go clearing it or anything else.
Well, yeah, that was separate though.
I realize that, but mentioning it.
Yeah, that was just a contract. That was a contractual arrangement.
Okay, if, if there's nothing else, if, if everybody's satisfied. At this point with the resource protection district. Uh, Ted can get back to us with the, the wording that we need for accessory structures there. Let's move on to. The stream protection district. Eight, six, three, five.
Eight, six, three, five. That's where we kind of like jumped into that.
That's where we started, but we. The resource.
Are we jumping over the, uh, shoreline overlay?
No, we'll come to that one afterward.
Yeah, that's an add-on. That's my fault.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we go back to eight, six, five, which was on the agenda. Um, and that was, uh. What, with the things that we, that were changed from the, uh. Uh, from the September twenty-fourth meeting. Says September seventeenth, that's when it was written, but the September twenty-fourth meeting. Was, um. That you, uh, Susan had recommended putting the special exemption shall not be granted as a remedy for a violation of shoreline zoning districts. Up at the top, let's start from the very beginning. You have to meet all of these. So if you have a violation, don't go any further because you're not gonna get hurt. The second was, um, I put in the Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook watershed because we had made an agreement. Um, when we, when we did our shoreline zoning to make a special. Uh, arrangement with Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook watershed or those, those stream systems. Um, had a hundred, had an increased setback of a hundred feet versus seventy-five feet. That was one of the deals we made with, uh, with, with Jennifer. Um. And, uh, we agreed to do that. We did that back in, what, two thousand seventeen, I think. Um. That had to be put in there. I'm not sure that. That, uh, I think I found an error in here. It shouldn't be. Um. It shouldn't be the watershed. Cuz that, the watershed's big and it should be the effective parcels not with, not. Affecting the setback.
Yeah.
Yep.
Otherwise, it's too broad.
Yeah, it's way too broad. From the upper Thatch, cuz it could be a stream. I don't know of another stream, but it could be. It could be a small water course that we don't know about that goes, that. That isn't even, doesn't even go, well, it'll eventually go into the Richardson Brook, but we were doing it with the Richardson Brook. And its tributaries that we identify on the map. So it'd be a small rivlet that really we shouldn't be involved in.
So it'll say the affected parcel is not within the setback of upper Thatch.
I would say the one hundred foot setback.
Okay.
So that eliminates the, the upper Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook, uh, from this, uh, setback exemption.
Uh. You'll remove watershed?
Yeah, getting rid of watershed because watershed actually gets pretty large.
Okay.
Um.
Why are you picking a hundred foot?
Cuz that's what it is.
Okay.
In the Richardson, if you look in the definition section, or I should say, the applicability section of. Section eight. Uh, let me pull it up. I got this thing here. Um, it says within one hundred foot. Horizontal distance of the normal high waterline of Brimstone Brook, Duck Brook, Upper Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brooks. So those brooks are all have a hundred foot. Right now, uh, Duck Brook and Brimstone Brook have not been identified as impaired watersheds, although Duck. Brimstone is now part of the, the Saco River. Um, uh. Saco River is having the same kind of study that, that the, uh. The lower Saco River, I should say, is having the same kind of study we do with the Kennebunk River. And we all know what happened to Brimstone Brook in recent history. And so I think that's gonna be part of the impaired watershed there. Um. At some point, but it hasn't been established that way yet. Uh, and Duck Brook, we know that Duck Brook will probably be pulled into an impaired watershed. Um, system under the Kennebunk study, but it hasn't happened yet. So, um. Unless you wanna do it now, but we know that Thatcher Brook and Richardson Brook have been part of the impaired watershed. Of, uh, that was established under the, uh, the grant to, uh. It's actually part of the whole Thatcher Brook watershed study and impaired watershed, um, remediation plan. Which quite frankly, benefit spent a big bucks implementing. So.
We, so we don't need, uh. Uh, concordance. Uh, from the first reference in the ordinance up here to, of seventy-five. With the hundred foot that you're gonna be putting in B.
Yeah, would you want me? I could say, I could take out seventy-five and say setback from the resource and stream production.
Do, cuz somebody's gonna see seventy-five and somebody's gonna see a hundred and they're gonna.
Yeah.
Uh, a boo-boo.
Good point. Then, then we don't need the hundred foot setback anymore on Richardson or, uh. I mean, you can put it in. It's informative because most of the other shoreline, uh, mostly the other. Stream protection districts are seventy-five feet and it's just these two brooks right now. And, well, actually it's four brooks right now.
So leave the hundred foot in there, Ted.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
See, are we on to see?
Yeah, we're on.
Would, I, I have a question on that first off. Would it not be easier to just say within the setback and not define it? Because if the state comes along, if they decide that there's some problem and it should be a hundred and fifty feet, then we're gonna have to go through this process all over. Why not just say if it's, if it's in, within that setback? And not define how big a setback it is.
But if we're asked the question, well, how do we answer it? For a definition.
It's what the state says the setback is.
Well, then why don't we just say that?
Yeah, well, that's.
So we say state setback.
That's right. And leave it at that.
No, well, that's, no, I, 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 I will warn you that that's. Um. That. When we say state, it's really not, there's no state mandate for that hundred foot setback.
Well, where did the hundred feet come from, Ted?
Hundred foot came from, um, the recommendations of. The Thatcher Brook watershed, uh, study and agreement that we did. Back in two thousand seventeen, I think, two thousand eighteen. Where one of the contributions, Rundle had, um, Rundle was a contributor to the, uh. The issues of water degradation in the Thatcher Brook watershed. Because we're actually, Rundle is the head of that watershed. We are at the very tip of that watershed. So it emanates from us and it emanates from some pretty impacted streams.
But I think we're just looking for the agency that defined the hundred foot setback to. Use that as a reference in our definition.
Where the agency?
It was an agreement between the towns.
The town of Rundle said, we're, under shoreline zoning, we're the agency that pumped it up to a hundred feet.
Well, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Yeah, then, then set it at a hundred feet and put it in there. Because if, if there's not, uh. Some higher authority that, that said, that says that it's a hundred feet, then we, and we're defining it that way, we should put it in that way.
Okay, I agree.
Remember that, one thing we always have to remember is that shoreline zoning, we are the agency. Um, DEP and DEP has, has basically made the towns, the municipalities, the agency that. Uh, enforces the chapter one thousand shoreline zoning law in the state of Maine. DEP provides, provides, uh, guidance and they review whether or not we meet the minimum standards. For their, uh, chapter one thousand guidelines. We can have, we can impose greater standards or more restrictive standards than the minimum state standards. And that's not a problem. What the state makes sure of is that we, 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 uh. Promulgate and enforce the minimum state standards. And if we fail to do that. Or we fail to enforce it or, uh, or in any way, shape or form, the state can. Uses a remedy to take over the shoreline zoning regulatory power from the state. They can remove it, uh, remove it from the municipality. So, but it's mandated by law that we are the regulatory authority. We can increase. The, uh, the standards, but we cannot decrease the minimum standards, okay?
So we'll, we'll go with the hundred foot then.
Okay.
Go, going on, looking at the next item that you had down. Oh, it says the setback shall be no less than fifty feet from the upland edge. Uh. For some rea- thirty-five was struck out for some reason.
It's what we were talking about earlier.
I thought, as I said earlier, I thought a DEP stream is always the fifty feet. If we look at our ordinance in any. Because of that, in any district, you'll see, now let's see, if you go to, let's say. Um, where is it? Go to six, one, urban residential district, you'll see in there. Setback from the normal high watermark for any intermittent streams outside of the shoreline zone, fifty to twenty-five feet. Yeah, that's a DEP rule that you have to be twenty-five feet from an intermittent stream and fifty feet from, uh, from, uh, a perennial stream.
Okay, well then, then that's, that's fine. That, that just answered the question.
Okay. And we don't have intermittent streams in the shoreline zoning district.
Right.
To the chair, got a question.
Yeah, Marty.
What is behind Arundo Auto? That water area.
That is part of Richardson Brook and then it goes into Thatcher Brook.
Okay.
Okay. That's where really, uh, that's where Richardson Brook goes into Thatcher Brook is behind Arundo Auto. A little farther down from there.
Okay.
But, but doesn't that also go under the bypass there?
Yes, it does. That's why, and because of a lot of, a lot of reasons, that's why it floods in large storms. That's why you'll find the bypass flooding down at the intersection with that turnpike. And I've been in one of those before too. It's not pretty. That's what the, that's what Peter Fred's trying to stop. And since we were contributor to it, we agreed to be part of their. Their plan, we worked with them on that. They wanted us actually to get into a program of replacing. Private culvert driveway culverts. Um, in which we would help, we would receive matching federal funds to do that. And I informed my group that there's no way the town of Rundle was gonna participate in replacing. Private driveway culverts that are fifteen inch culverts, just not gonna do it. I think I, I, I think the selectman agreed with me on that cuz it didn't.
Okay, moving on to the next line. It was, uh. About the encroachment for single family residents. Uh, and not the accessory structures, walls, decks, and you've added permanent boardwalks, paved trails and paths. And non-native vegetation or other similar landscape elements. I got no problem with it.
That's what basically, I think it was Tom who asked me last time, what's a landscape element? So that's what of those landscape elements was referring to. So if I gave those examples up front, they gave an idea of what landscape elements were.
That helps. I like that.
On. Stream protection district. But. Let's move on to the last one, which was the shoreline. Overlay district. And the only change that I see that's in here. Is the setback reductions are not eligible for the following impaired streams. Brimstone Brook, Goth Mill Brook, Richardson Brook and Upper Thatcher Brook and Duck Brook.
Yeah, well, I might be pulling, I, I, I just took that out of the, out of the, the front and I'm, I'm having second thoughts about Brimstone and Brooks. And Goth Mill and Duck right now because they are not. They're not defined as impaired streams yet. Until EPA defines them as part of an impaired stream, I'm not feeling real good about calling them an impaired stream. Richardson and Duck Brook. Excuse me, Upper Thatcher Brook and Richardson are defined as that. Um. But the question is. You know, we know we have problems in Goth Mill and Duck Brook.
Why not just say they're not eligible for those streams and take the word impaired out?
Um, we can do that.
I'm sorry, would you remind me where Duck Brook is?
Uh, right behind my house. It comes, it comes down through Walt, it starts up above Walter Woods, comes out through crosses.
MG Lane.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
And then it runs all the way down to Downing Road to the, to the Alpaca Farm and, and across from there.
It actually goes all the way up to Old Alfred Road and is on the other, is the other watershed. That's on the other side of Upper Thatcher Brook. So you have a watershed break between Upper Thatcher Brook and Duck Brook. Uh, round, oh geez, I think it's around. Um. Uh, so I think it's right on Old Alfred Road. I think that is the watershed break. You know where Jamie's house is? Jamie's got part of Upper Thatcher Brook going through right by his house.
That was Bartlett's farm.
So let's make that change.
That the, that's Bartlett Farms is part of Bartlett Farms, you know, where the, uh. Uh, where the exit going out to, um. Going out to New Road.
Oh, at Liberty Acres.
Actually, it's Liberty Acres, right. That is the, that's the uppermost, that, that area in there is the uppermost part of, of Duck Brook. On the western, on the westernmost tributary, then the northernmost tributary. Goes into the project itself. So it's, you know. Bartlett Farms is part of it too. We thought that Bartlett Farms might be a source, but. Where the hotspots were, were, which is really weird. I think, Rich, you saw that on some of the maps.
Yep.
Hotspots testing was in the area where it hasn't been developed yet. So we're kind of befuddled with the sources. That's gonna be phased too.
Okay, so let's just take the word impaired out and just name those five brooks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving right along here.
All right, that's all three of those. I will work on, uh, resource protection, which I expect would, would be a problem one.
Okay, next, next thing up for discussion. Age restricted, oh no, I'm sorry, accessory sheds.
My favorite topic.
Where is it? Oh, there it is. Accessory sheds, definitely two.
Yeah, here we go, guys. Jim and I sat down and kind of battered this round. And we had, we said, okay, do we want fabric? And I think, I think we had this discussion at the last meeting when we talked about wood sheds. We had a very clear idea of what these sheds should be and um, and what it could or could not be. And so we immediately said a wooden shed, wooden structure. With a footprint of no greater than a hundred and twenty feet, square feet, and a roof peak of no greater than fifteen feet. Used for accessory storage purposes and not for human habitation.
So, um, just, Jamie's not here, but I think the consensus was when we were originally discussing this, and as you all know, I wanted this change. Uh, and the shed I'm thinking of is actually less than, that I want for myself is less than a hundred and twenty feet. But Jamie was pretty vocal about the fact that that was very small. And um, it was too restrictive, and I tend not to disagree, that a double negative. I don't disagree with um, his observation. So, well, for my own personal purposes, I think a hundred and twenty feet or less is, or a hundred and twenty feet is great. I think for somebody who wants a, an accessory, a shed like this and wants to really use it for storage for tools, they may want a little more than a ten by twelve shed. And I think, you know, it wouldn't be a hardship to make that happen, even if it was twelve by twelve or, I, I forget what, Jen, do you remember what sizes Jamie was thinking of? Roger?
You know, I, I don't, but I'm thinking about i- if something is even larger than that and simply built as an open pole barn. You know?
Right, and there are even wood sheds that are bigger than that, that, you know, to store your wood for the winter. I'm
Right.
We're talking about putting this closer than normal buildings are allowed to be. If you want a big building, sure, you can put it in, but you're gonna meet the setback, the side setback. This is a reduction in the setback due to the small steel and the structure involved.
Right, I'm not disagreeing. And as I said, for my own personal purposes, a hundred and twenty feet is more than ample, but it, it, it may be a little too restrictive, and I think that's the thing that Jamie's not here to clarify. But I think that's what he was talking about, and there seemed to be a consensus among the other board members that it was too small.
But, but to that's point.
I wasn't part of that consensus though. I, I think um, this is within the setbacks. So, a hundred and twenty feet, right now, maybe it's, nothing could be built there. So maybe a hundred and twenty feet is better than nothing.
I, I'm fine with it. I just, uh, I'm just recalling Jamie's comments, and there seemed to be some agreement among the other board members to make it a little bit bigger.
Yes, I'm, I'm just not sure that it's a good idea. Again, because if you want a bigger building, don't build it in a setback.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Were we using the correct word, a hundred and twenty feet?
A hundred and twenty, square feet.
Square feet.
Okay, that's different.
So that's like ten by twelve, Marty.
Lot of building.
That's ten by twelve. That's what Joe puts up. If you recall, remember he started with a ten by ten, then you gotta
Yeah, yeah.
Ten by tw- uh, twelve, so you could put a kayak in there.
Yeah.
Or a golf cart.
Yeah, and, or golf, or kayak, and the golf cart. That's what the issue was. They started popping up like mushrooms all over the place. And that's a situation where they're, you know, they can be anywhere in, in Joe's world.
Okay, so leave it at a hundred and twenty feet. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so right, right now, the setback is fifty feet, the, the rear setback is fifty feet?
Uh, the issue is really the side setback, the side and rear setback in the, in, in, and I, I put it on the chart there. Side and rear setback for accessory sheds, uh, the actual side setback is twenty, thirty-five.
Is thirty-five.
Yeah, side setback for accessory shed would be twenty-five feet. Uh, rear yard is fifty feet, it's twenty-five feet on the rear.
Right, I'm fine with that.
And you know, you have to think about one of these things being on your property line. I mean, it's on your property line. It's, it's not as much of a problem in the R four district. When you get to the R one district, yeah, that starts to get a little more serious, you know?
But in the R one, twenty-five feet uh, off of the property line is pretty far into their property, isn't it? Because those are one acre.
Yeah, but the side setback is, but that, we're talking fifteen feet off your property line, you're gonna have a fifteen foot high shed.
Right, but that's a rear property line.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's the side yard too. So fifteen.
But that's, that's in the R one, that's in the R one, and we're looking at the R four and the R three.
Right, and so I think twenty-five is, I like that. Thirty-five is fine. You know, whatever you guys, I think twenty-five was good.
You know what I think, I think if we, if we look at the map and we're talking about R four, I mean, so much of it is, is subject to uh, the, the abutment by a stream. I mean, it's relatively little areas that aren't a stream or abutting onto a, a different town.
So I think if, if somebody wants to and, and they can get it that close to a stream without creating a problem, I got no problem with it. And I've got no problem with dropping the R three down to twenty feet. But I have, that assumes that we're not going to merge R two and R three. Because if we do.
Yeah, so that, until, until such time that the board does it, I, I, any, anytime we have any reduction in, in space and bulk performance in the residential districts for this, I have to do it for all three districts.
Yeah.
Plus the R four, which is not a residential district.
But I, I think, I think the way we have it right now is, is fine.
I agree.
Go along with that. Yeah, it's good.
Cool.
When you say what we have right now, are we talking about as Tad has drafted this?
Yes.
With Jim Nagel's input.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if, if the issue of wooden would be an issue. And he said, yeah, I mean, you're not gonna put one of those plastic Home Depot ones. You know, you don't qualify for one of those, because it's a wooden structure. So one of those plastic ones, two one eleven, yeah, that passes. That's wood product. That's a wood, but it also gets rid of the, you know, the fabric ones, which are hideous.
Like the tarp towns, I think they're called, little.
Yeah, well, they're a lot better than tarp town. They're not blue, first of all.
Oh, well, I meant, I've seen them green.
I got a lot of blue roofs in my neighborhood.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's called rural character.
Can I ask a question?
I was rea- I was watching, I was watching our, our last planning board meeting, yeah, and Jens and I were talking about that. You know, you, a carriage house is, when you, when you cross an area, boy, yes, a carriage house is defined as a, a shed leaning against a forty-seven Dodge.
Susan's got a question.
I had a quick question, because I'm, I'm having to fix all the wood on my house, which is rotting away. If you use composite boards, is that considered wood building versus the not plastic, not met, or even metal, but the composite wood, is that qualifying under what you're talking about?
That is a real, this is where it gets thorny, and I'm glad you brought it up, Susan, because that's the thorny part, guys. Because there are, uh, you know, two one eleven is a wood product.
It's plastic, isn't it?
No, it isn't. It actually, it's wood. It, it's a lot of wood.
Plywood.
Plywood. It's essentially ply- it's the cheapest plywood you could possibly get on the planet.
This, the decking that you can make, the decking that never goes away, that's not, has any plastic in it, that's
That, that is plastic. That's a composite. That's all plastic.
I'm saying, you know, the compo- the stuff they call composite wood, it's not composite. And that's not what I'm talking about then. The stuff that you make decking with that looks like wood, acts like wood, cuts like wood, you build with it, doesn't go away.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're building a shed, you might want to build something that's not gonna go away.
Like AZEC.
Yeah, and that, that would be a really expensive shed. Because that, it would be really expensive. Plus, if you're using it for structural support, it's not really that rigid.
Okay, I was just curious, because again,
No, it's a good
building, you're saying clock, this, that, but other thing people build with things, are either the metal, people have the, the, the cheap metal ones, they also have the ones on Route one, and I mean, one eleven and Dayton that are nice, and people build up, and they're not cheap things.
No, what they're saying basically, what the concern is to the, 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 how, how are you gonna define which are suitable, which are not? That's the biggest problem.
Okay, I was just curious.
No, it's a good point. I know we're gonna run into a problem on it, you know? And we're gonna get some resistance, because a lot of people swear by hardy board. I'm not sure I put hardy, which is a concrete product. I'm not sure I'd wanna spend the money to put hardy board on a shred, but, you know, there are people who want to do that. Uh, then there, there are those who would want to put uh, well. You know.
I just found it to be odd that you're, that you're defining what a shed, you're saying what materials you can use to build a shed, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think the object's to make sure that we don't get some hideous stuff on somebody's property line fifteen feet away. I don't know, it's an aesthetic concern, but it's saying, well, if you want one of those things, put it twenty-five feet from the property line.
Okay.
That, you know, it's that, that we're restricting, we're saying, if you're gonna put something up to your neighbor's property line, close to it, make it nice. You know, don't make it a tarp, you know, a tarp structure. It's not a tar paper or, these days, Tyvek structure. It's gotta add, you know, something to it.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
Okay.
Elderly housing. And it's, it's broken into two sections. Uh, age-restricted housing, and we're looking at two definitions. We're looking at fifty-five and old, older, and sixty-two and older. And the com plan does say that we should have age-restricted housing.
Right, and the issue here, if I I printed this off and I apologize, it, it uh, it was a crazy daytime downstairs at the plotter and uh, things got all discombobulated, and so this is one of the most important, and where is it? Done, oh, that's clustered. I don't want that.
Well, you define, you know, Tad, when you and I talked today, in a nutshell, you gave me a pretty good, uh, you know, you made them very distinct in terms of the way you described them, and you did it very concisely. Probably uh, without uh, notes.
Yeah.
So, why don't you just
Without notes again, huh?
No, just, I think if you just explain to them the way you did this afternoon, I mean, it was easy to digest and uh, uh, to the point.
Okay, well, the uh, the point is that we have, we have said that one of the things that we wanted to do in order to preserve rural character is to encourage development that is more economical in terms of land development. Uh, development that actually can involve a lot more design. Uh, involving uh, fitting the um, buildings to landscape, to folds in the land, being able to uh, cluster do, uh, houses in a manner that preserves more open space around it. And the com plan committee had decided that age, that basically age-restricted housing, or fifty-five plus housing, uh, had that capability of, of being number one, a hot market item, number two, a very good methodology of preserving open space. And uh, three, also enabling um, developments that would help to give that sense of elbow room and preserve rural character. Um, and so they had really applied uh, age-restricted housing as a preferred housing type in all residential districts in the R four district as well. We actually also have it in the DB one district. Uh, um, and in order to encourage it, one of the things that we had discussed was essentially having a density bonus, so that it would make it more economical for somebody to do an age-restricted housing development versus a cluster, uh, single-family residential house, uh, housing development. Um, and so right now, in the multifamily housing section, we have a, a uh, a two times or double density bonus that's given to anybody who does age-restricted housing. Right now, we also define age-restricted housing as being fifty-five and older housing.
The, the uh, density bonus applies to multifamily, not individual.
It does not apply to individual, and that's, that's one of the, one of the big issues. Um, one of the reasons it does, to go, to say very quickly, is that one thing that can happen is when you apply it to single-family lots, um, in, in, they the owners of those lots are less inclined to follow the HUD rules on fifty-five and older housing. Which means that you, one person, at least one person, one of the owners, one of the, one of those people who lives in the unit, must be fifty-five and older. And that you should really have no adult, and uh, that only applies to eighty percent of the units. So twenty percent of the units can have fifty-five and older, or less than, uh, have, have household, the oldest uh, occupant can, can be less than, than fifty-five. Um, why are these ridiculous rules in place? Very simply, because age-restricted housing, whether it be sixty-two plus or fifty-five plus, uh, is a, is an exception to the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-four. Which said, you shall not discriminate in housing based on age, sex, sexual orientation, creed, color, all the rest of it. Having a, uh, having restrictions in which you have to be a certain age to be in a development is in fact a violation of the Fair Housing Act. And the, the Congress somehow in their, in the wisdom, actually listens to the public, saying that these kind of developments are preferred, are desirable, and serve some very important functions for that demographic group. And therefore, Congress did provide exceptions to the law. Those exceptions though, carryal, are, are governed by a lot of caveats. In sixty-two and over housing, you have to be, every how, every resident has to be sixty-two. One hundred percent, the project's gotta be sixty-two and over. Because of that, you're, those are usually referred to as elderly housing projects. And we know them, they, you know, the two oh one, the two sixteen, two thirteen, two twenty-three pro- of grant funds, um, are targeted at to, uh, at creating elderly housing complexes, especially in low-income areas and, and rural areas, where it's difficult to have affordable housing for people on fixed incomes, especially when they have low, uh, low income. Fifty-five and older was intended to do something similar, but it really is geared towards empty, empty nesters, and that's where um, a lot of developers saw a real strong market for people who are empty nesters uh, in the fifties. Uh, the kids are gone, they're, they wanna downsize, they wanna go into a place like a golf course community, and they wanna be in a community in, in a warm part of the country, or just simply want to get rid of this responsibility of mowing the lawn, taking care of the roof. Uh, you know, uh, shoveling the snow, uh, get, get into a situation where they, they uh, uh, they have an easier way of, of living and enjoy the, the later part of their life before retirement. Um, a lot of these sprung up as golf course communities, as I said, Florida's filled with fifty-five and elders. Uh, they're all, that's not just the only thing they have, they have golf course communities, period. But that became very popular. Here in Maine, we have a number of them. In New England, we have quite a few fifty-five and older uh, communities. What do they provide as an advantage for the town? We already talked about some of the development patterns that, that are good for it. Um, they, they provide us with a lot more flexibility um, in uh, in developing uh, the land in a way that we could preserve open space and create elbow room, create that play with creating rural character, because you usually don't use lots. Play with creating rural character because you usually don't use lots, they're not lots or they could be attached housing. Or they can be house amenities, house amenities being uh, you know, uh, basically like what Joe has, it's a. Unit, you own the unit and you own the land that's under the unit and maybe a five foot strip around the unit, but the rest is all owned in common. By uh, the association. And therefore the association has control over the land. And in many ways uh has much more leverage to be able to control who you sell to in the future. One of the HUD requirements that most people don't talk about, the associations are saddled with. Is because it's a fifty five and older community, they have to make regular reports, census reports to HUD. Showing that they still meet all of the requirements of the exemptions uh statutes. So you they have to provide, I I think it's every two years, you have to have a census report that's sent in the HUD saying how many units are occupied by. Um, by people over fifty five and are there any underage children? Uh, and what is the percentage, you have at least eighty percent of those units occupied by at least one person that's fifty five. Um, and so those those requirements have to be done on a regular basis, homeowners associations get saddled with that. Sixty two uh plus is a lot easier because you can't get in and you can't live there unless you're sixty two, so from a management standpoint, that's a little easier. Um. But so consequently fifty five and older uh. Uh, homeowners associations, you know, have to exercise, have to stay vigilant and occasionally have to exercise some muscle in who somebody sells their unit to at some future date. And I'm giving you more information you really want to have, I guess. But I think when we started, when we start talking about fifty five and older, we have to ask ourselves. This is some, this is something the complaint committee really pushed pushing hard, it's in the complaint for every district. And the question is, do we want age restricted housing? Uh, do we want to just limit ourselves right now to fifty five and older, which is what we do limit ourselves to right now? Do we want to also provide for sixty two plus housing as well? Are we gonna give that done density bonuses? Uh, do we want to give density bonuses? Um. We know that frankly speaking, Brookside Development went in because that was a. We gave a density bonus for that. We have a project that's gonna be coming up next, our next meeting that. Uh, they're getting, they're claiming a density bonus for a fifty five and older multi-family unit. Project that that's gonna be in a DB two district, what I told you about Rich, they.
Yeah, okay.
They submitted their application today. Um, at the last minute, four four fifty or something like that. Um. So um. I don't have my my notes in front of me, maybe somebody can lead us through the questions. There's a, there's a whole bunch of things we need to decide what we want to do with fifty five and older, before I start writing standards, I want to make sure that you folks. Know exactly. Um, what you, what you want to get out of this and and uh. And so that way we can have standards, um. Anybody want to, let me get that.
I I can, I can walk you through them, I have them right here.
I'm really embarrassed that I don't, everything, I've got everything else in double duplicates, but that didn't print out apparently.
The first question, should the town develop? Age restricted housing standards for both fifty five and sixty two plus developments? Do we want to just do for one or do we want to break it up and say, no, we want it for for two separate groups of people?
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
What about school kids? Originally, I thought, I originally thought the age fifty five and older. Was more or less. Being used so that we were not burdening our school system.
I think the age limit, Marty, is not younger than eighteen, is that right, Ted?
Yes.
So in any situation, they're supposed to be out of school.
Right, well, that's for those that are fifty five, in the twenty percent, you can have kids.
If you go to the sixty two and older, everybody in that development has to be sixty two.
Correct.
At least, so there's no, there is no twenty percent can be under sixty two, which you're either sixty two or you're not here.
Correct. You're also, I remember sixty two is also the 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 earliest retirement that you can get social security at. So there, they tend to sixty two, I'll tell you honestly, sixty two plus communities usually are. Elderly housing and usually are funded in some way, I won't say exclusively, because I know there's places in Florida and some. Some more affluent areas that uh have these that are not. Uh, subsidized in some way by the feds, but we're getting into a a demographic group that does not, that that is usually is not employed. It is in retirement mode, so.
Personally, I I I think we should allow both.
Okay.
Before we go into further, I I just like to say what what I think. We have to be careful of, I I see it almost this almost be like. Age discrimination and in reverse by um. By having. The, by encouraging these 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 older uh residents, we. In effect, are we not discouraging younger families? And making it uh less affordable, but developers will come in and build th- these type of developments. Probably won't be building affordable homes for for families, um. And I know there are tax. Benefits to not having kids in school, but. What is a town without children and the soul of the town really is uh the school systems and the kids growing up? This this state is already the oldest state in the country. And. We're in one of the older parts of the of the state too, a retirement area. I think we have to be careful, I I. I was in favor, I was on the board when when we originally developed the first one, I thought, oh, that sounds great. But now I'm seeing, especially after um, the only. Uh, age restricted development we we have in town, I think was a fiasco on on Log Cabin Road. Um, it it doesn't help the town in any way. Um, it certainly doesn't help the neighbors, but anyways, that being aside, um. I think we are undermining. The um. The nature of of what a town is, because. It won't just be us that will be remaining in town, it will be mostly out of status that will be. Probably buying a second home or whatever and so it's. Um, and so a lot of that is good, but at a certain point, what about the families of the town? How can we keep the children here? Also, one more thing I'll say that this it, I feel like, well, it's, it's a bunch of old people making making uh some. Some plans for us old people to to have have um, maybe. Um, or people like us in our age bracket, I, it's not. We're not thinking of the thirty forty year olds.
Tom, there's nobody like me, because I'm I'm looking going, if I don't have six acres of land, then. I'm living in the wrong neighborhood and I'm living by myself.
Well, but.
But I I do hear what you're saying, I.
Even from the urban areas south of us are, um, they think having a half acre is is being out in the wilderness.
Yeah, I know it, I can't quite fathom that, but I do understand what you're saying and it is. Uh. It is, there is a form of discrimination to age restricted housing.
Oh, it is, yeah, it's an exception, it it is discrimination, absolutely. And the the object of it was to to provide for uh housing for people who are downsizing. And who want to associate together with people of their similar age. Um. And the, and that. And it's not limited just to that group, but it is uh, it is age discrimination, you're absolutely right, Tom.
So, but Tom, the two don't have to be mutually exclusive. I mean, you know, we could still develop the town to be attractive to young families and at the same time. Try to attract, uh. You know, I think in your notes tag, you mentioned that the fifty five and older is normally a more affluent. Uh, demographic.
Yes.
Um, more active, more likely to be out spending money and. Uh, not necessarily uh put further burden on our school. Our schools, which i- if you look at your tax bill, I just paid mine the other day that. It the. The amount that we pay in taxes for schools and believe me, um. It's wonderful if your kids can go to public schools and have, you know, fine schools with great teachers. But I think it would be nice to have an offset. Also, where we have a group of people that might be. Um, you know, spending money in town and doing things to help its development, but not put further burden on the tax base in.
Unfortunately, the the offset i- is already tipped, the balance is already tipped. Away from families and you just look at Ogunquit, they had to close down their their grammar school, what do they have? Thirty five kids, school age in the whole town. And um, and same same thing's happened in Kenny Bunkport, they might have maybe a hundred. Twenty kids, K through eight. And 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 the number is shrinking, it's going down five percent a year, we are, we we could. Happen here as well, so you know, it's um. It, I think we might be throwing out the baby with the bathwater, I'm not opposed to having uh some some of the um elderly housing. But I think we have to be really careful. What we're, where we're gonna become, I think we will be like. Just like um, the Rundle um. Cottage, their their um motto is the the um, what's that, the the quiet side of Kenny Bunkport or something that, you know, with this. This is becoming an area that retirees are moving to, not just on the coast, but in the woods of a Rundle. If we're already getting that already. And I feel like it's a be a runaway train.
But that's the tax base, I think also discourages young families. From coming here because it's, it's a heavy burden, really.
Well.
Um, and I think Rundle, I I don't know about what Kenny Bunk is, I know Kenny Bunk.
I think we're, we're one of the better towns for taxes.
Yeah, we are, definitely.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't hold the candle to Kenny Bunkport.
Yeah.
I thought Kenny Bunkport was last.
Heck of a lot better than Kenny Bunk or Saco.
Really bitter.
But I I I don't think the issue is i- is the fact that the the. The school age population. Is declining, it's declining everywhere, because I'll be right with you soon, because our kids. Don't want to have kids, they don't. A lot of the millennial generation has chosen not to have children and it is showing up. At in declining, the the elderly population is growing and the young people. Aren't there to replace us as as they come up through.
Well, I'm pleased, I'm pleased to say that uh, my daughter's not one of those, because I've got a new grandson as of.
Oh, how fabulous.
Yeah.
My daughter is not one either, because I got five grandkids and I had one child.
Can I say something just really quickly?
Yes, absolutely.
I was on the school board for y'all for years. Um, and fought for a mildred day to stay open and be part of town of Rundle. The only reason we were able to fight to keep at that time is because the Rundle school children was enough to put into the school as ratio to teacher. Um, Kenny Bunk, again, as you know, we're part of RSU seventy one, in that sense, we're gonna twenty one, sorry, um, flashbacks. Um, the, that school is still big enough to absorb kids from Rundle, if you don't attract younger families. That their way vote is weighted over the Rundle and Kenny Bunkport, the Kenny Bunk people. So unless there's kids to fill the school, that school can come up again to be closed and obvious whatever for funding, if there's not enough kids to keep in there. So I'm just saying, you're saying that's decreasing, isn't there a way to? Encourage developers just to do more um rural, as we talked, as you guys talked about last time, rural um stuff for all developments versus just the age ones? Isn't there some way that you guys can encourage that?
But we 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 still need to address the the question. Are we, are we going to do anything from an age restricted housing? Point of view, do we want, we can say, no, we don't have to do fifty five, we don't have to do sixty two, we don't have to do any of it, we can just leave the whole thing open. The the purpose of this discussion is, are we going to do anything? Are we going to look at it? And say? Let's do fifty five. Let's do sixty two, let's do one or the other, or let's not do any.
Didn't you just say that the fifty five and the sixty two had had get more advantage because? You want to have more open space and they get a bonus and they get this and they get that.
They do, doesn't mean that we have to give them, the way it's set up right now, they do have that advantage, they do have a density bonus. We don't, we can simply say we're not doing any more age restricted housing, we could look at the one that we had that flopped and go, we're not doing it again. And we could eliminate that aspect, that's the question that's in front of us. Are we going to do it or are we not going to do it? If we're gonna do it, we've got a bunch of work that we have to do to determine. Uh, and I would, I would look at it. And think that there's. One other thing that we're gonna have to look at when we go, when we start looking at age restricted communities. Those of you that were on the board when, I can't think of his name, the guy that owns the golf course.
Yeah.
Came to us about a decade ago. And wanted to put in elderly housing and we said, yes, this would work out well. He then said he wanted a permit to be able to do a hundred or a hundred and fifty of them all at once in one year and use up all of the permits that were available and we told him, no. That's one of those things we're gonna have to look at. Not not just whether or not we're going to have housing, but if we have housing, are we going to give them special treatment in terms of building permits?
Well, you know, I. I think I brought that up in my in in my report to you guys, that that is, none of these things are gonna work, whether it be elderly housing. Or whether it be uh, uh, multi-family housing with that restriction. We aren't going to be able to get any kind of concentrated housing in this town. Because right now the growth could, growth control ordinance is a detriment to multi-family housing. And to age restricted housing and to, let's say, uh, Hurahan was proposing a fifty five and older, even if he wasn't, if he was just proposing a recreational golf course community. Uh, like a number of other, like Doomgrass, that's not a very good example. Uh, like Civil Oaks was supposed to be, uh, Woodlands, like the Woodlands in Falmouth or Falmouth Country Club. Uh, they don't need fifty five and older. But the thing is, when you do sections of a project in which you're using multi-family. You've got to get, grab ten, fifteen, twenty permits at one time in order to do one s- one one phase, one set of buildings, you can't sit there and. And plunk away and compete for twenty five uh building permits in a year, you just can't do it economically, you're not gonna build one condo at a time in an attached condo. You know, that's a fiveplex or something, you can't do that.
Right now, it's even worse than that, you can get six permits.
You could get six permits, but you you can only have a three uh, three units in a, uh, no more than three units in an attached housing.
Yeah, and well, and we we may want to look at that, we may decide that it's better to just take multi-family housing and. And allow. Uh, more than, and not, maybe not more than three, maybe just three units. But we have to change that num- that six for building permits. And we, and we may, one of the things that we could always offer is that if you're willing to build. A development of multi-family houses. Uh, instead of our saying. Well, normally we give you six building permits a year, so you could put up eighteen units if you did multi-family, because it's. Treat each one of them as a building.
Yeah, but there's a limitation to how many one person can pick, take out a year.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, we could give them the exception and allow it.
I think we'd have to.
Joe get a year.
Joe's does, Joe's exempt. Because it's not year round housing. If you look at our seasonal resort community uh sta- uh regulations, it says it is exempt. From the growth control, which is why he just pulled out twenty one building permits uh to uh yesterday. Uh, he's going great guns, by the way, he's 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 getting more business than ever.
Which means we're getting, and it's it's likely in this same demographic we're talking about, so. You know, I I gotta say, I uh, I'm very receptive to Tom's remarks, I'm persuaded by them.
Okay.
I would too, but I would say also that, you know, I I frankly think at the same time. Affordable housing in Rundle, um. The that ship may have sailed, and the reason why I say that is we have no program, we had no program in place. We have soils that, we have no sewer. We have soils that uh are uh. Actually very uh. Resisted to to any kind of dense development, we have lousy soils, in other words. And uh, quite frankly, we're in a. And quite frankly, we're in a location. That's become very desirable and there's one new development that. Has occurred that realtors have been telling me in the last few months. That the number of people who are buying product properties sight unseen in coastal. York County and even in Cumberland County, even getting up to Sagahawk and some some areas. Uh, they're buying properties sight unseen and they're asking ten to fifteen grand over asking price. There's bid wars going on. For units that are five bedrooms through four and five bedrooms. Because what they're envisioning having offices for for the two parents having. Offices where they're working remotely and then also having bedrooms for children.
Let me go through and and find out from the board. Susan. What do you think of age restricted housing? Uh, we're we're actually, I guess there's three different ways of looking at this. There's the. The age restricted of fifty five, age restricted of sixty two. Barring either one of those, what about multifamily?
So I don't have any problem with the fifty five and older community, especially because I think they. Could be an economic force that might help the town. And spur development because of needs that they have in terms of satisfying. You know, the kinds of perks and amenities they want to have around them and where they live. Uh, I think if we develop it, I think Joe's. What Joe has done, uh, even though that's just seasonal cottages, is so well done. And so attractive. I'm not saying that every. You know, community that's built that's, uh, has a denser population is going to. Be quite as nicely developed as Joe's has been, especially the first. Two phases, so I don't have any problem with that. I don't know that I would necessarily. Uh, go beyond the fifty five and over and do. Uh, have both sixty two and fifty five since two sixty two year olds. Can live in the fifty five and over community. And I don't think you necessarily need to segregate the two age groups. Per se, I agree with Tom that we need more children if 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 they're available. And I also think that our children are having fewer children. I know just from my own children, one has none and he's forty and. One just had one and she's thirty eight, so and she's not going to have any more. As opposed to our generation and the generation before. I I just think we need to do things that spur economic development in Arundel. And multifamily may do it, it depends whether or not they help to drive other types of. Development in town to to broaden our tax base. And make the town also more attractive to business. And I just think building. Fifty five and over multifamily housing, sixty two and over and whatever, if we don't have the infrastructure. Of amenities. That helps support this. I think it becomes an undue burden on the town. So I think you have to look at it sort of globally. And. As opposed to piecemeal. And so. I'm not adverse to any of it. I just think. We need a strategy, we need a blueprint, we need a plan. That's my thought.
Well, that's that's part of the purpose for the the. Checklist and questions that Tad sent out is to help us draw up that that blueprint and and get that discussion started.
Not to, I I'll just one more thing. Um, I had Henry Ingersson's wife call me. Because she was helping to promote his campaign. She was very charming. And she asked me, um, she said, I understand you're on the planning board. What is the one main thing? That you think is most important to Arundel? And I said, as a relatively new resident, I would say sewer and water. Up room one. And, you know, we talk about all this stuff, all this development and whatever. We have sewer right at that bridge. And we were a part of that plan to bring it there so that we could access and utilize it. Without sewer and water. Route one is going to be not as I think Tab made this, he made this comment, storage sheds. And other things. Um, that really don't promote. People spending money in Arundel and businesses developing and being supported by the community. You can. We have to, that to me is the start of being able to actually. Develop a Rundle thoughtfully. I think.
It's going to continue to look like Noble Borough, Route One.
Um, well, I I look like Noble Borough. I've been there.
So I already said most of what I was thinking, I I am not opposed to it, but I want to look at the bigger picture. For for all to lift everybody up and make it better. Um, I, because when I, again, maybe it's because I have sour taste from. The development on Log Cabin Road. Every time I drive by there, it seems like that did nothing for the town. It 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 doesn't fit, you drive as far as rural uh, atmosphere, rural. Community, it you you drive down Log Cabin Road, it's a beautiful road until you see that. That just crowded, packed in place with with Abovites, uh, six foot Abovites out front.
Where is it, Tom?
It's on Log Cabin Road, just just, um, east of. Um, the the Trolley Museum.
Down near Guinea Road and the Trolley Museum.
Right after the bend hidden support.
Quarter mile, half mile past Guinea Road.
So looking at that, again, I I don't want to. Say how bad that was, but I think it was, but I think we'd have to get something to turn it around, make it so that. There's more design standards, have some setback, re- retain the rural. Um, feeling of the town because that that just looks like it's a it's a neighborhood from. From some other state that was just plopped right there. And and I think. It didn't do anything for the town. It certainly didn't do anything for the neighbors in that area. I know someone who lives uh, uh, right next door and. And it it really, it it's, they, it changed, it it looks. It just doesn't fit in with the rural uh, atmosphere that we're looking for. So so that's one thing. So I think we we should have not only just. Age restriction, but some type of design elements in there that will help retain the rural community. Um, but I also think I I'd like to see us work on multifamily to encourage. I don't, I'm not talking like tenement buildings, but maybe. Um, a little development with, like they have right behind Shoppers Village and between. Shoppers Village and and Hannaford, there's a number of, um, of multifamily units back there. And they really look nice. They 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 developed really nice. It's not, they don't have to be bad. Um, so I'd like to see us work on things like that. Not just. For for elderly. They, the, most of the elderly, um, developments are serving. Those who can afford many other options, but what about the the younger people who grew up in town that. Don't really have all those options. So I I'm look, I'd rather see us look at more than just elderly housing.
Okay, Roger.
Uh, I'm fine. Multifamilies, because quite often. The seniors of the the owner of the property, they're going to end up living with their kids anyway. I wouldn't discourage or encourage. Senior complexes, but I'd be more inclined to encourage multifamily dwellings.
Okay, Jens, your thoughts?
I concur with, uh, first, as I mentioned with Tom and and Roger. I'm not really inclined at all toward the, uh, just sixty two for reasons that. Susan suggested too. So that's that's my feeling. I think, uh, looking at multifamily ought to be. Um, the highest among those three priorities.
Okay, thank you. Marty.
Fifty five, yes, because we even have a good example going on the campground road. Of a fifty five and older unit there presently. Okay, and it is quite pleasant viewing and everything else. If you recall along the way. Multifamily. I think if if you're doing for your building permits or anything else. You have to consider. Your height, okay, like we're saying, I'm I'm speaking for myself, not getting any younger. But a lot of times you're fifty five and older. And your sixty twos, they want more of a ranch instead of having trip factors or. Climbing stairs and everything else along the way. So I mean, this is just another thought. I do need, know that we need to try to keep. Our kids in town. I say kids, young adults or whatever. But the fact is. You have to, uh, what we really do need is like Susan said. We finally do have the water situation along Route One. But if we don't have any sewers. Under the soil conditions and everything else, you aren't going to have much development anywhere.
Okay. I'm good with any of them. Be it fifty five plus, be it sixty two, be it multifamily. I think I'd rather see multifamily. Uh, with some with some very strict design standards and some very strict HOA. Uh, requirements. Because a lot of the problems that that are showing up. Uh, down on on Log Cabin Road are related to the fact that the homeowners association really has no teeth. Yeah, because the people, they don't, the homeowners association just controls the road. They don't own the land. So there's got, there's got to be some change in that requirement if you, if we're going to continue to allow. Developments in. So that we we can make it similar to what Joe has done up at the cottages where, yeah, you're going to own that little piece of land. But the homeowners association is going to own the rest of it so that they can have more control over what's actually going on.
I thought they own, I thought the people on. Well, Caber Road, the homeowner association took over everything and they own the land.
Yeah, they do. They don't own the, they know, they don't own the lots, they own the common land and the road. And they're going to be coming to the town asking for the town to take over the road.
The problem is that the that the homeowners association does not own the lot, therefore. Who own the lots can cut the trees down. And the homeowners association can say you're not supposed to. But what are you going to do? You don't, they don't have that control to force the issue.
And that's, that's why I also put in that, the, uh, the elements for cluster. That's why I piggyback cluster in there and multifamily to discuss that issue of providing adequate. What what we call adequate buffers at this particular time and making sure that any kind of requirement for landscaping and so forth. Is on common land controlled by the homeowners association and not on individual lots. The problem in all of these is the way our ordinance is written, that this, that the fifty foot buffer. With twenty, only twenty five feet of of unclear land is owned by the homeowner. It's not owned by the association, so there's no teeth. As we witnessed when we were walking on Oak Ridge. Terrorists at our site walk, we watched the homeowner cut more trees, you know, there there's no. Sense of, there's no authority over that except the town. Saying, put it back, but how long, we're not going to police all these projects for the rest of our lives. The homeowners association is supposed to do that. So I think we've learned some hard lessons about the inadequacies of our ordinances. On things like design and we're going to have to take more active play in it in order to make sure any project we do. Meets a certain standard that we're looking for in this town. And that is a higher quality standard. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay.
You guys are taking a poll, so.
If I, if I can, if I understand correctly. Uh, the majority of the of the planning board seems to think that fifty five plus. While not ideal, might be something to look at, but we definitely want to look at multifamily.
Are we going to do, and and that's true, but realize, I I would also like to point out a couple of things. I mean, these things are all. Economically driven, they're driven by return. You know, uh, very simply put. Um, so we, you need density to make some, all of these things work. And. And right now, we, the only place that we have density bonus, we have fifty five and older. Across the board, double density, no matter where you are. Um, in the DB one and DB two, if you guys remember, we worked pretty hard in trying to attract multifamily in that district and there were density. Density bonuses for multifamily if it was accompanied by a certain amount of business. And we tried to provide incentives to do that. The biggest problem though is that the land we're talking about. Has some severe environmental constraints that makes septic a problem, so. We've got some some problem issues there. The the way you make housing more affordable is to be able to increase the density. So a developer can lower the price by being able to have more units on on a per acre basis. And until we get sewer or we come up with some other methodology, or we just give them extra density to encourage multifamily. Uh, we're not going to get any, we're we're, because the the big moneymaker in town on the free market. Situation, the way our ordinance is right now, is a single family home. And quite frankly, the the moderate income family, uh, is getting priced out. It's that simple. They're coming my way. They're in my part of the world. You want FMHA housing, the smaller houses and so forth, they're they're popping up all over my neighborhood in Hollis and Waterboro. And and Buxton and that area out there. That's where there, that's where those people who might want to get a house in in Arundel. Are finding they can go where the prices of land is so much cheaper.
Corinne. It's one case in point. She wanted to live in a Rundle. They couldn't find affordable, they couldn't find a place to live.
It's getting worse. Is, you know, you were talking about what what value did did, uh, that, uh, log cabin community provide? Those houses went for five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, they're on a half acre land. They went for four to five hundred. They started around, the the first one when I heard was four hundred thousand, I laughed. And the last one was around five thirty.
Yeah.
And you're going to find that single, the three bedroom house that's a ranch, that's going up now goes for three forty.
It's. Going from five fifty to seven.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's it's just out of control right now.
Well, it's not going to last. I mean, uh.
No, there'll be a, there'll be, there'll be a.
Wrong correction and it's coming.
Soon as interest rates change.
Is having a lot to do with it. People are moving into the, uh, safe areas like we live in.
Yep. Well, they're doing that, but they're also doing it because they can, because now they're lone eagles. I mean, we were, we talked about lone eagles when the internet first came up. But now they're they're sanctioned lone eagles, they're they're, uh, their their corporations are realizing the economic benefit of remote. You know, remote teams. And my son, I got two son in laws who haven't been back in their offices since March. One works at Dallas and he lives in Boston and the other one lives in Gorman, he's just down the road in Yonham. And his building is now for lease.
Right, the the whole building is for lease.
The whole building is for lease.
Really, wow.
Yeah.
I I don't think it was, I don't think it was Yonham. It might have been Main Health, they bought a, a come, a building down in in, uh, Worcester. They spent a little over four million dollars to buy it. And they were going to staff it and COVID hit. And they're trying to sell the building now. They've decided they don't need it, they can work from home.
That was Yonham. That was one of the considers, yeah.
It's happening everywhere.
And they didn't let anybody, they didn't, they didn't, uh, furlough or did they, they did not lay off any of the the employees, they just sent them home.
Yeah.
My son's law office, Jens, in LA, four floors and a high-rise office building, they're not returning. And they're not renewing their lease.
Wow.
And it's gonna be a real problem with commercial real estate. So housing, the bubble may not burst for a very long time, if ever. Because I'm not sure people, businesses are gonna return to the offices that they once occupied. With the same degree that they occupied them before. It's gonna be really interesting.
So given.
Totally different markets, so.
Yeah, no, I agree, but.
Dealt with anybody at DEP that's been in an office building in the last six months. Honestly, I, every time I talk to DEP, I'm talking about somebody in the house, you're gonna hear the dog barking or the kids crying.
Yeah, so that, gi- given the, given the fact that it's quarter past nine, there are a number of questions on the age-restricted housing work that Tad sent out that we should look at and go through. Uh, and we'll just, we'll pick that conversation up in two weeks on the, on the on the twenty-second. So if we could get those looked at and come up with some suggestions, and we can either work with them, or if you don't like them, we'll throw them all out and start something else.
Hey.
The next item.
The loppers are in the car.
Say what, Marty?
Nothing.
Okay.
Speaking to my son.
The, the next item is the removal of the Land Use Ordinance nine, three, fourteen, one and contract to yard registrations due to, due to the expiration of the registration process. I'm of the opinion that we should just take them out. Uh, we, we need to go to town meeting because it's part of the Land Use Ordinance. So if we want, but they have sunset and there's no reason to keep them in there. Any thoughts on it?
Well, they've been such a stellar success.
Yeah, I know. We've had, what? All of zero people come forward?
Three.
Well, we, we, we had a couple of people when we first set it up, we had them come forward, but since we did this extension, nobody's come forward.
Only one person. We told them it was unnecessary. Because they didn't want to make a business out of it.
Right.
So personally, yes.
So I, I think we should, I think we should take it out of the Land Use Ordinance. Because it's, it's in there. If you, if you're in the right zone, you can have one. All that, all of the that we put in there was the extension on the time for you to register an existing contract to yard.
Yeah.
Well, that period of time is long gone by, so there's no reason to keep, to keep it in there. I think we should take it out.
I agree with you.
Uh, my thoughts are turn, leave it in there for another year because maybe we might get better communication with this new Taj Mahal and letting other people come in and see what's going on.
But Marty, they can't come in and apply. The, the, the period in time that is referenced in the ordinance ran out over a year ago.
Well, no, it ran out this August.
I was saying, let it go for another year just because of the, of the COVID.
I thought the.
Huh?
I thought the extension was for one more year.
Was.
It already expired, but we were letting people come in a year later.
No, it, it, it expired. We, we.
August first.
We passed the extension in June of two thousand and.
Nineteen.
Eighteen?
Nineteen. The extension, it was in nineteen. June of nineteen, with the expiring in August of twenty.
Okay, so that, their opportunity has expired. The only thing that they can do now is ask us to do it again. Uh, personally, I didn't want to do it the last time. Because it ran, we had it out there for quite a period of time for people to come in. And we had two people come in and say, oh, I wanna, I gotta register my contract yard. Uh, since then, we've had nobody come in and ask. So I see no reason to leave it in the ordinance. Because it has expired. It's like a sunset law. After, after a while, the law goes away and it doesn't show up on the books anymore. I think this should go away. Just clean up the ordinance a little bit instead of having to look at all of the references.
What, what are we gonna do about the contractor yards that we know are there that are not registered?
That's a codes enforcement issue. And unfortunately, he hasn't been given the authority to do anything about it.
That's a tricky thing.
Well, we, we have ongoing violations that we're still playing cat and mouse with. And it is a cat and mouse game, guys.
Yeah.
They move the equipment off, they move it back on.
Sometimes they don't even bother to move the equipment. They just ignore it completely.
That's true.
So what, what um is involved in providing some teeth? I mean, is that gonna be something that has to be found in the ordinance, or is there not something within the provision of authority to the CEO that would allow him to uh deal with that cat and mouse?
That's, that's where the problem becomes, comes in. He's not allowed to issue a notice, a notice of violation without going through the town attorney. And he has to get permission to go to the town attorney, and he's not getting it.
From whom? The selectman?
Yep.
Well, why, why is that our issue?
It's not.
It's our issue.
It's not our issue.
Not your issue unless you want your the, the only thing that's about enforcement is obviously enforcement of our land use laws. If we don't have enforcement on our land use laws, then what are you guys doing sitting there on a Thursday night?
Right. So Jim Nagle doesn't have anybody backing him up. So he goes out and he can make all these determinations, but.
What we're finding is that in order to make sure that, to give it some legs is he gets a formal, he gets a formal complaint from a citizen and then then he goes and pursues it. Then he goes and investigates it, but he doesn't go searching for it. What he does is he waits till he gets a, a, a written complaint. Not an anonymous complaint, a written, signed complaint. And most people aren't willing to turn in their neighbors.
Just seems to me that we're swimming around in there that, that we don't need to. It's not our issue. If we, if we have a concern about it as a, as a board because uh integrity and the respect for our ordinance is important to us, then I think we ought to have a heart-to-heart with the selectmen about this. And because, you know, they don't want us uh rummaging around in their areas of their authority, but this is squarely in their area of authority, albeit it does ultimately affect us. But they should be the first entity that deals with this.
I agree, they should be. For, for our purposes, the question is, do we want to take this sunset ordinance out of the land use ordinance? And I think we should.
I, I would agree with you. I mean, sure.
I see no reason to keep it in there.
Take it out.
Yeah, agree, agree.
They've had enough time to get it done.
Yeah, and, and in connection with doing that, probably, you know, you know, how about a memo from the board to the other board to say, this is what we did, but here's our concern and we, we suggested maybe Jim Nagle ought to be given some authority to deal with the consequences of those who, who didn't take the opportunity and are continuing to flout the ordinance.
To the chair.
Yes, Marty.
Also, too, are not the other party of the ones who are supposed to set the fines? And they don't like to set fines?
They are. We have no control over that either, which is fine with me. I don't want to have the.
Oh, I realize that, but what.
There are days when I would like to have the ability, but. Okay.
All right, so I will.
So I didn't mean, I was gonna say, Susan, or before we adjourn, Susan, Susan, do you have something you want to talk to the board about?
I was just curious when the discussion about um the project that you, the sidewalk that you did and then what plans are and when that would be gonna be on the agenda moving forward. And I was interested in listening to the fifty-five because I know that was one of the things that was being discussed for the Oak Ridge for the second phase and using the, um, the road, um, because it was less traveled and all that. So that's why I've been listening to the conversation.
Oh, okay. I just didn't want, not that we were adjourning per se, but.
Right, but that was, I was just curious when that was gonna be moved forward on the next agenda so that I could make sure I come to that and not bother you on other things like that.
We're simply waiting for him uh to give us the, the, the information we need to go ahead.
So you don't discuss what you, what you saw until it's brought up on the next time when they bring something up?
Well, they have to be here.
Gotcha. Okay.
And right now, we've already, we've, we basically told them that what they gave us the last time was not suitable, did not meet ordinance standards. Um, I think, I think you might have gotten a copy of the, of my notes and the board basically said the same thing and the applicant said, I realized there's some real problems. Let's just, let's just table this until I come back with, with an improved plan.
Okay.
And so we're waiting for the improved plan.
Okay. That's why I came on. I went to see what was, because I wanted to see, because it's the first meeting you've had since she walked in, so I didn't know.
You thought you were really interested in, in all of the wonderful things we talk about.
You're fascinating.
We thought you were gonna put in an application to be on the planning board.
Yeah.
Anywho, I didn't mean to be a, I think, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't want to, again, I missed it on the first end when it was passed. And I, I, you know, fool me once, shame on, shame on twice, not gonna happen. So you might be stuck with my face until this gets through because I'm not gonna let it go quietly into that good night, as they say.
And that, that's not gonna be a problem at all.
Okay.
Let's set a date and have some public hearings.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, what, what are we, what's ready to go? I, I don't have anything, the only thing that we have ready to go is accessory sheds.
We have the accessories. Uh, we. We can take out the.
Nice.
Good night, Susan.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Rich.
Nine, three, fourteen, one. The, uh, the sunset.
Yeah.
We can take that out. And then if you.
With notes.
The, the, the only other thing that's out there was the, the special exceptions.
All of them, the way they are? I thought you wanted me to work on some.
Yeah, no, you were gonna, you were gonna work on uh the shoreline with, with some language for. It's not bona fide. We changed, we took that word out.
Yeah, okay, uh, you want me to work on, on resource, well, I gotta work more on resource protection. You're happy with.
We wanted a definition that would be a subset of accessory structures. That would be.
Right.
So you.
Possibly that the Eastern Trail has that we could use.
Okay, so eight, six, three, five is, that's uh stream protection. Um, and amendment two eight, six, two, five is okay, work on eight, six, one, five, which is the RP zone. And so you want to go with eight, six, three, five and eight, six, two, five to public hearing without eight, six, one, five?
Sure. We're just, it, it.
When is public hearing?
We need to have the public hearings.
Yeah.
When is town meeting?
Town meeting, June. But we've been told they, Keith has said that he wants us to have the public hearings when we get this stuff done so that we don't end up sitting around in April rushing to get everything taken care of.
Correct.
So if, if these things are ready to go, let's hold a public hearing. And so that we won't have a public hearing that lasts four days in April.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We've, we've tried that. Doesn't always work.
Oh, it's killed us in the past. We've been under some pressure. That's one of the reasons we were constantly meeting for, for three and a half months, every week.
Yeah.
I just as soon avoid that.
Well, yeah, we were dealing with media issues too. Let's, let's be honest. I mean.
We were, but at least in this case, we're gonna have a bunch of stuff that's ready to go. And, you know, as we get stuff finished and, and, and we'll just hold a public hearing and then move on.
All right, well, uh, do you want to wait until I give you eight, six, one, five, or do you want to schedule a public hearing?
No, we could, I, I don't mind. We can wait for eight, six, one, five.
Because the sooner that you could have a public hearing, you can't have it for the next meeting because I need to have uh, geez, is there anything specific in here?
Well, let me, let me.
We have to wait, Ted. If we have to wait to have the public hearing, why don't we do all three?
That's what I was.
Absolutely.
And knock them out of.
We can't do a next meeting. There's not enough notification time.
So we'll do it maybe the meeting after? Do you have, is that enough time?
Yeah, that would be.
That, that depends on are we gonna do eight, six, three, one?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do all three together.
Hearings on all of them at once.
Right, so we have to wait for Tad to get that last one back to us so that we'll have it complete.
And is, is there anything else in our little packet? Uh, we've got some, the sunset for eight, three, fourteen, one. Uh, the three SPs, um, was there anything else? No, I guess nothing else is ready to go yet, huh?
No, I don't think there was. Oh, yeah, the, the accessory sheds.
Accessory sheds, right. Yep, okay, so yeah, we can get, get that ready to go for a month from now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Why can't, why can't we do on the twenty-second?
Because I need. I have to, I, I would have had to advertise tonight for it.
Okay, so this will bump us into second week of November?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion. We schedule a hearing. Whatever that date is, the first meeting of, um, of November.
The twelfth.
The twelfth, thanks.
Because the fifth is the first.
And that, for, for what, for what it's worth, guys, that's the only meeting we're having in this, in November.
Yeah.
Because I'm not meeting, you guys are wonderful, but I'm not gonna eat meat after I'm, I've fallen asleep from eating turkey.
No.
That tryptophan is a killer.
It is. Put you right out of it.
Yeah.
Happily so, actually.
I should tell you now, it looks as if we'll have that meeting on November twelfth. And then we'll have another meeting on December tenth.
That'll be it.
So we've got, we've got three meetings.
Christmas Eve?
No.
Okay.
I can't, I can't do that.
Me neither.
I, I spent Christmas Eve sitting in front of the fireplace with a loaded gun, waiting for somebody to try to climb down the chimney.
Ah, humbug.
You got ammunition?
I got lots of it right now.
Where are you getting all your ammunition?
So I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion is, motion to adjourn has been made, seconded. We are all done. I will, we yeah, we don't have anything coming up. Oh, well.
We have a sidewalk for Bentley's.
We have a sidewalk for Bentley's.
The twenties, the twenty.
Twenty-second at five P M.
The twenty-second.
On that agenda, the twenty-second, we're gonna have a preliminary application uh for a multi-use project off of Pine Crest Acres uh for age-restricted housing and a, uh well, it looks like a storage shed, giant rental storage shed.
And I rest my case.
Where is Pine Crest?
Acro, Pine, Pine Crest Road is, uh, or Lane is off of Limerick Road down near, um.
The E? Near the big E?
It's just before Neotus Place. Actually, it's farther up than that, but it's in a general area.
Did we adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we are adjourned.